Good evening, folks. I'd like to call the meeting of April 22 to order, 7:05 on our start. Just a reminder to the members of our public, we are working with our webcasting system, so the cameras in the back there for you that are at the podium. If you can speak clearly into the microphone, that is what captures the audio. Unfortunately, the way that the camera is sitting, it will probably catch the back of your head, but it does focus on the council table. If you are not wanting to give your name and address at the podium audibly, then do provide it, please, to our recorder, Mercy, and then we have that ready for the minutes as necessary. So, looking to add one item on the agenda. At 6.1.1, there was a missing copy of the policy that we could compare to the changes in the bylaw information or that we are working with in that one. So, we just need to... It was handed out to council at your tables, and you can use that for reference. But aside from that, I think we're good to go on the agenda. If I could look for approval? Secondor? All those in favor? Motion carried. This is the time for public participation. We do have a presentation coming forward, so this is for matters other than the presentation. So if there's anyone from the public that would like to come to speak, now is your chance. Mr. McNabb?
Doug McNabb, 811 Bexhill Place. I'm going to make this short. I didn't realize this was televised. I'm not television shy, however. I don't want to rant on, other than I will briefly explain why I did come here tonight. And it was to express my concerns with the feeble attempt to satisfy my questions with regards to the Island Highway crosswalk. Mr. Baxter has explained to me that the errors occurred by both the contractor and the consultant, resulting in push buttons for the crosswalk being inaccessible to folks in wheelchairs. I simply am appalled at this because my question is simply, does the engineering department not look at the drawings submitted by the consultants or his recommendations for the projects before proceeding? What has prompted this whole information I'm speaking about now is the simple fact that I was driving by, and here they are jackhammering up a brand-new crosswalk. And I'm just saying, what's wrong with this picture? The contractors that bid on the job surely put everything in writing before they were awarded the contract. I'd like to know, I hope, is this standard procedure for any job that is bid for? It appears to me this matter was not checked properly or passed and passed on to the consultant and the contractor. The rest, I would like, because this is on TV, I would prefer to give this to the Assistant Administrative Assistant. And I'm requesting everybody on this council to read what I have said. Out of a courtesy to our guests tonight that are speaking, I feel this is the best way to handle it. You have the idea of what I am complaining about. And even though I have been told it's not costing the taxpayer any money, it is certainly costing us humility in the sense that here we go again, as they did this, to block the traffic, the single lane again. The rest is going to be fairly straightforward, and I will cut it out there because I do not have the time for... Speech really basically shouldn't be three minutes long. This is going to take longer than three minutes. So, I thank you for listening thus far. I will pass this information on to you, and I ask that every council take a look at this. And I welcome feedback from anybody else. I've had feedback from Mr. Baxter and Ms. Cullington. And that's all I'm going to say at this point. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Doug, and we'll make sure that that's distributed. Any other members in the audience for any matter? Last time?
Laverne Cherry, 3453 Blue Sky Place. This is in regard to Lookout Lake. And I was here at the meeting last week and found it... I felt that nobody was actually listening to us. We were talking, but there was a lot of deaf ears. And I'm quite disappointed with it. To keep it on the short side, first of all, I'd like to say we have people here in the council that regard themselves as green initiative people. And here we have a lake, that's a little lake sitting there with everything green. And we then try to improve it by throwing a bunch of gravel, picnic tables, and now an outhouse. We're very upset with this outhouse business. What's wrong with people bringing their picnic basket and a blanket like they used to? But here's my real question. Why are there no toilets or outhouses at Callwood Creek Park and Ocean View Park, which both have playgrounds for children? You would think that maybe they'd want to have toilets because of the little kids and stuff like that. And yet, you're not putting them there. So I'd like to know why the Parks and Recreation Board are so gung-ho on making our little Outlook Lake like a Thetis Park Lake? Because you've got to remember, Thetis Park Lake doesn't have a bunch of houses around it neither. And also, the parking issue there. And I really feel that nobody is listening to the people that were here. The only people that were here last week were people who were opposed to these issues. And there wasn't one person representing people that say, as you say, want these things, like toilets and picnic tables. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Final time, any other members? All right, looking to move on. Mayor's message, there are just a couple of things. It is Earth Day today. There have been different celebrations around the city in regards to that. It's also the start of National Volunteer Week. I had the pleasure of attending a dinner on Friday that the RCMP held in honor of the many volunteers that service the West Shore in some capacity associated with the RCMP. And there were presentations made for quite a number of our local residents here in Callwood for their various years of service. So, I would like to acknowledge for all of those who do volunteering work. Each of you brings a special something to those committees, but the one thing that you all have in common is the commitment to making your communities better. So I thank you on behalf of council. We're wrapping up the end of Cancer Month. And you have some of us that have their daffodils on, and others are on coats and things like that. So just acknowledgement again for cancer awareness. And I think that's it for now. So, thanks on that one. Oh, there's one bit of a good news thing. Last council meeting, we had a discussion in around the opportunity to put up a dog dispenser receptacle. And I've been contacted by a local business that is very interested in helping us achieve that at their cost, not ours. So there'll be more information coming forward on that. Looking to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of council, April 8. Move adoption, second? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Looking to receive minutes for 4.2, 1.2, 3, 4, and 5.
Move receipt, second?
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. We have with us this evening Capitol Regional District Susan Palmer and others that are there to proceed through a RGS review. Susan? I guess we have to, because the presentation goes beyond our normal time. So, Ms. Cullington, we need to make a motion to go beyond our...
I would move that we allow an hour or time as necessary to hear the presentation. My understanding is that it's very interactive, that there's a short presentation and then opportunity for comments. So it's not a full-on, hour-long presentation, but a shorter presentation broken up into a series of segments.
Second?
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Susan, thank you.
I'm sorry. And introduction, is this better? Introduction to the Regional Sustainability Strategy. And so it's like a RSS 101. And then we'll get into the presentation portion of the evening, so...
We live in an incredible part of the world. We have repeated its knowledge for its moderate climate, beautiful surroundings, and its great quality of life. We value the region's natural green and blue spaces, its choice of education, housing, and jobs, its collection of strong, diverse communities, and its leadership in sustainability. The Capitol Regional District is a vast and varied place, stretching from Wanda Fuka electoral area through the western communities, central communities, and the Sanes Peninsula. An important role of the CRD is regional cooperation on transportation and planning. CRD also manages regional housing, regional health, regional parks and environmental stewardship, and regional infrastructure.
We all drink the same water. We breathe the same air. So, by coming together around the table, we can acknowledge that there's a level of planning that transcends individual municipal boundaries.
The 2003 Regional Growth Strategy works to keep urban settlement relatively compact, to focus growth in regional centers, and to help protect the agricultural land and the natural spaces the citizens cherish. Ten years later, the Regional Sustainability Strategy will renew and build on that foundation.
So we're also looking at this document to help us address some of the challenges that are being faced, both regionally and globally. Things like climate change and how we help with our own preparedness for disaster. How we look at some of the environmental challenges that are looming, such as decreasing biodiversity and managing our food systems. How we will get to the point of a healthy and vibrant community now and in the future, addressing such things as the changing demographics in the region and what our response is going to be, both socially and economically.
Our region is the seat of the provincial government and home to a growing population. But more significant than growth is the change in our population. By 2038, more than 30% of the population will be over 65, and this has profound implications for housing, for built forms.
And I think one of the most important things that the Sustainability Strategy is going to address is how we manage and balance our growth over the coming years and how we link that into the transportation systems, how we move around the region intermunicipally, interregionally, how we can really make that strong link between mobility, accessibility, and where we're going to live, work, and play. So that's a key focus of the Regional Sustainability Strategy, and will be the anchor of the document.
The CRD Regional Sustainability Strategy is an opportunity to clarify shared values across our community of communities and to choose priorities for use of limited time, energy, and money to gain desired outcomes. Creating the Regional Sustainability Strategy is a multi-stage process. From consultation work to date, there are many key themes that are shared across this region. The Regional Sustainability Strategy will define our collective aspirations, our dreams, and also focus priorities on how to pursue those dreams in ways that are cooperative, energetic, and together. Watch for upcoming information releases and events. Please lend us your thoughtfulness to address these challenges and opportunities. We live in an incredible part of the world. The Capitol Region is...
Okay. I'll do my best to try and see you and speak into the mic and run the presentation. So, I'm Susan Palmer. I'm the project coordinator for the Regional Sustainability Strategy. And tonight I have with me a few of my colleagues. So, Morris Requelski, who's with the Health and Capitol Planning Strategies; Henry Kampoff with the CRD Housing Secretariat; and Corey Berger, who's with Regional Planning. And he will be taking some notes tonight so that we have a record of the discussion. And the intention here is that... Is that it being an informal kind of discussion, just a quick overview of the presentation is that I'll go through some meeting outcomes that we'd like to achieve, walk you briefly through the RSS work plan and the audiences for it, and a brief discussion on why we plan on a regional basis. The focus of the presentation is on the Golder Report that you should have received in your agenda packages, which is a review of the Regional Growth Strategy, and then on to next steps. And as was mentioned, the presentation is broken up into different components. And so, usually what we've done is just stop after there's one topic area, and then there can be some discussion and questions at that point, if you choose. And otherwise, we'll just move on to the next topic. So, we're in phase one of the RSS development process and working closely with various provincial... With the Intergovernmental Advisory Committee, which is comprised of various provincial ministries and agencies. For example, VHA, the Agricultural Land Commissioner, involves the Ministry of Community Sport and Culture and so on. And representations also provided from Department of National Defense, that's CFB Esquimalt, and the Development Planning Advisory Committee, which is made up of planners from each of the municipalities and from the Wanda Fuka electoral area. So, your own planner would be part of the D-PAC. And that comprises the Intergovernmental... The total of the Intergovernmental Advisory Committee. In addition, we are also working... We will be working, have some separate meetings just with the Development Planning Advisory Committee. And the other group that we're working closely with is the Sustainability Resource Team, which is the CRD's internal, multi-departamental team. So, this is a major cross-cutting initiative, and so we're engaging a number of the departments. In terms of the meeting outcomes, as we co-create the RSS, we've made time in the schedule to meet with municipal councils. And actually, this is the last of the first round. We've been to all the other municipal councils. And the idea is to share information and the content of the RSS and the direction things are heading to receive some feedback and input on the Regional Growth Strategy review and have some discussion. It's important to note, this isn't part of the municipal referral process. We're not... It's not part of the formal process. We're not seeking any resolutions at this time. There will be additional opportunities before the RSS is ready for referral for more of these meetings. We're thinking probably one or two other ones, and plus, there'll be other additional engagement opportunities. The work plan's broken into four phases. This slide is a little bit dated. We're discovering fairly quickly here that it's going to take us more than 20 months to complete the process. However, we've been... So we are currently revising the schedule. And this is, as they say, it's a little bit outdated. We've almost completed the review of the Regional Growth Strategy. We're into the drafting of the RSS. And this climate action and food system strategies have been initiated. And then, the community engagement. So, at the end of that process, we intend to have what we're calling an engagement-ready draft. And we're anticipating now that that's going to occur probably towards the end of this year. And then that will go out, and then there'll be an opportunity in phase three. Or phase two will involve broad public engagement and broad stakeholder engagement. And phase three will be a revision and finalizing the RSS and the completion of the sub-strategies. And then phase four will be preparation of the implementation framework. And that's when the formal municipal referral process will be initiated, bylaw adoption, and then adoption of the sub-strategies. So, this slide, which isn't actually showing up particularly well here, it faded out. So you've got hard copies, and hopefully, your hard copy will read a little bit better than this does. This gives an overview of the process. In the middle is something called the SWG. That's the Sustainability Working Group, which is just our internal project team, basically, with myself and then Mark Misick Evans is the leader, project leader of the group. To the right, you can see we've got the RSS team. And at the top there, there's the... SRT is the Sustainability Resource Team. SRT is the Sustainability Resource Team, then there's the Corporate Leadership Team, the RSS Consultant, who is Golder and Associates, and then the Climate Action Consultants, First Nations, and Food Systems Consultants are all part of the team. And then in addition to that, there are the three parallel plans, of which the Regional Transportation is one of them, and the Community Health and Well-Being Research and Policy Development Project, and the Regional Affordable Housing Strategy Update Process. So that's all on the right side. On the left side, we have the related audiences to this process, which includes First Nations, the IAC or Intergovernmental Advisory Committee itself, the municipalities, the DPAC, and then the Roundtable of the Environment, which has been struck by the CRD Board. Then we've got on the top is the sign-off and approval process from an internal perspective, and that includes the Planning, Transportation, and Protective Services Committee, and then the CRD Board itself. And then below, on the bottom, is key informants who are also being engaged at this stage. So the process of creating the Regional Sustainability Strategy is a process of planning on a regional basis. And some of the reasons why we plan on a regional basis is that, whoops, is that the local government has certain requirements, and that includes the need to address climate change, housing, transportation, regional district services, parks and natural areas, economic development. And it also provides, the Regional Sustainability Strategy will also provide the framework for the official community plans. The Chair of the CRD mentioned in the video that, you know, there are a number of reasons why it's important to plan on a regional basis, and it's our intention through this process to identify and address matters that are of regional interest while respecting local interests. And we're looking to you and the other councils and so on to help us define where that line Regional District is a federation of municipalities as well as local government for electoral areas. They provide services in accordance with what is agreed upon by the member municipalities. And the CRD has over two hundred service, infrastructure, and financing agreements with municipalities and electoral areas. Regional planning is a region-wide service, with the exception of the Gulf Islands. So the RGS Review Report, prepared by Golden and Associates, was organized based on the nine policy options which were developed earlier in this process, going back into 2010. The first topic area that it deals with, and when I've completed a few slides in this, then I'll pause for some comments or questions. So the first item that it deals with is the Regional Urban Containment and Servicing Policy Area, or the RUXPA. And they have several options for updating the RUXPA, but first of all, indicate it's important that it be maintained, but we could clarify distinctions between urban and rural areas. It would be possible to also add criteria to the servicing policy, for example, some technical fiscal and equity criteria, and to establish a more consistent approach to establishing the RUXPA boundaries. Presently, different municipalities have different criteria for determining the RUXPA within their boundaries. So this map, again, none of these are showing up particularly well in the projector, but hopefully you'll be able to see the colors on your hard copy there. That will indicate the pink color is the RUXPA. And so you can see that your, the entire municipality is within the RUXPA boundaries, and then there's a yellow circle, which is the major center. And the Regional Growth Strategy set a target of ninety percent of all new dwelling units were to be accommodated or contained within the RUXPA boundary. And in fact, we exceeded that target quite substantially with ninety-eight percent of all new dwelling units being within the boundary. However, the flipside of that is that the definition, that the actual boundaries themselves are quite generous, and so one can argue it's a relatively easy target to hit, and that maybe we need to start fine-tuning things a little bit more to, in order to focus growth more effectively in the future. Some of the other recommendations include developing policies on a sub-regional basis. One of the issues is having to do with water servicing in low or no-growth areas. Some of the rural areas are indicating an interest in having some water servicing, even though they have no intention to accommodate growth, but it's to resolve some of the issues that they have with respect to access for water. Another recommendation is to expand or modify the settlement hierarchy to include more criteria with respect to densities and land use mix, and also to expand out the settlement hierarchy in terms of the rural communities. And thirdly, to better integrate land use and transportation. And one of the primary ways of doing that is with transit supportive density. So Callwood, just to give a brief overview of where you are right now, population and with dwellings and employment, and then the projections for 2038. So, and essentially, the projections were double the population base. And again, this map works better when you can see it in color. It's showing the metropolitan core, and then Callwood, the population density within the city is seven point eight persons per hectare, and the dwelling density is two point nine dwelling units per hectare, which are relatively low densities. And so I'll just pause there and see if there's any questions or comments at this stage.
I just have, just on a general policy standpoint, when we're talking about Regional Growth Strategy, how is the CRD addressing issues? For example, I'm drawn to the thought of Central Sanage and the whole Peninsula Co-op issue, and around the municipality having an idea of how they want their municipality to look and the CRD overriding that from a Regional Growth Strategy standpoint. So how does that fit into, like, how, I'm trying to understand and understand how this fits when something comes to this table, and from a Callwood standpoint, that we have a vision of where we want our municipality to be, and it conflicts with the region?
Well, I think that's, to the mayor and council, I'll do my best to answer the question, but I can't give you a really direct one, really, in part. It has to do with, as you mentioned earlier, the Regional Sustainability Strategy actually is an agreement amongst all of the municipalities, and then, and everybody signs on to it. So the process we're going through right now is intended to get back to the comments from everybody and all the participants that would need to sign off, and we're going to be going through the process to hopefully come up with a document that everyone is comfortable with and is happy to sign on to. And so how that shakes out in terms of specific issues, I can't answer that.
I'm not looking at, I'm looking for that specifically as far as central transport. You can use that as an example.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand the nature of what you're getting at, since this is an agreement amongst the different municipal councils that gets documented into the Regional Sustainability Strategy. And so then, then it becomes a question of, you know, consistency with that agreement and how that's interpreted. One of the, one of the messages that's been coming back through this process is the, or certainly a desire for greater clarity about what is actually being agreed to, so that there's less hope or broad, different interpretations.
I'm just wondering, looking at your map of Callwood, which doesn't show very well on your projector, that's the one. And just, there's a number of density centers within Callwood that are in our OCP that are not reflected on that map, and I'm just wondering how important that is?
It may not, it would depend on the nature of them. It may not be that important because this is really looking at the regional level. It doesn't mean that from the local OCP level, there might be additional centers that are important.
Yeah. I think where it would affect things is in regard to transportation management, and certainly with transit planning, because if you only see our core as being Callwood Corners, which is relatively not that far into Callwood, we certainly do have other transit hubs, one very important road that isn't even on the map, which is Kelly Road, where our buses have recently been rerouted, so they only travel one direction on Kelly Road now. So those are things that are a concern in our community, and if they're not on the map, I just, I'm concerned that they wouldn't be represented in the, in the strategy towards any future transit options, et cetera.
So let me clarify that this map is the map from the existing Regional Growth Strategy. And this is still in the review of the existing one, so it's not the moving forward part yet. Now, the next map, we have anticipated where I'm going next, which has to do with transportation and mobility hubs. So I can move on to that if everybody's ready.
I did, you know, if the people who spread, was referred to, there are actually various exceptions, why would you need a sustainability? Especially, it would have to be sustainable within those boundaries, or you'd have to work on something, I mean, for it on.
Well, I think you'll see as I go through that the Regional Sustainability Strategy is actually broader than just dealing with physical growth. There will be other elements to the plan as well. But your point is well acknowledged, that the growth containment is one of the most important components of the Regional Sustainability Strategy. So the next section deals with transportation issues and mobility. And this information's coming out of the Regional Transportation Plan, and then it's not showing up well here, but hopefully a little better on your stages there, that we've got, it's indicating complete mobility hubs, of which one is identified for, and again, this is looking at it from the regional perspective, not necessarily how some of the details might work out at the local level. Complete mobility hubs are the orangish circles, the small orange circles on the map, and they're areas with major trip origins and destinations, and they're served by multiple transit routes with high frequency and connected to all modes, and they would have minimum density levels. Destination mobility hubs are the purple triangles, and they would be key regional destinations with large catchment areas and high trip volumes, and they would include things like, such as hospitals, secondary education centers, things like that, large retail centers and other major employers. And I don't think you have one of those identified within Callwood at this point. And then the gateway mobility hubs would be major interchanges between two or more different modes, and they would serve as key access points for traveling to and out of the region. In terms of the network itself, there's the primary, strategic and moderate, the primary routes are the ones in the red, and that would be things like the Island Highway and Gold Stream. So just, you can sort of see where things are coming together there, just to the north east of Callwood, and then the Island Highway comes into the Callwood Corners area and meets up with Gold Stream. And then those are areas that are important for inter-community travel, and are planned to receive significant transportation infrastructure or land use intensification. And they're also served by two of those modes of transportation and provide connectivity between the mobility hubs. The strategic routes, so that would include ones like Peak Road and the Chosens, are identified as, they were identified as high priority for one or two of the modes in the precursors to the Regional Transportation Plan. And then the moderate ones are the green lines there, and that would be other significant corridors. So the primary routes have also been identified in DC Transit's Transit Future Plan for, as part of the Rapid Transit Network, and the strategic routes would accommodate frequent transit service. So the intention with the process here is to establish a desired growth pattern first, and then shape the mobility options to connect and serve the desired pattern of growth. And at this point, we're also taking a lateral pass from the Regional Transportation Plan to identify a regional transportation network that'll connect major centers and mobility hubs where density and employment exist or where they are planned, and to develop transit, transportation demand management policies that would be supportive of density, to address transportation connectivity and facilities required to support active transportation and transit, and address accessibility and affordability, and also to establish multi-level, multimodal level of service targets. So there's some information shown here from the Origin-Donation Survey conducted in 2011, and this is indicating the mode share for trips originating from Callwood, destined to Callwood, and within Callwood within twenty-four hours. And this was based on workday travel activity. So you can see that Callwood actually has more drivers proportionate to the rest of the region, and the auto-passenger rates are about the same. Transit is not too bad, within or to Callwood, it's five percent, and bicycle travel is close to par with the rest of the region, and walking activity within Callwood is respectable at twelve percent. And it's interesting to note that twenty-eight percent of all of the trips originating in Callwood during an average weekday are destined for Callwood, so that's the capture rate within the community. So, and this is where the, this is where people are coming and going. So this is AM peak period trips to, from, and within Callwood. So trips from Callwood, you can see, are actually a next, an exporter of profit during the AM peak, with over seven thousand trips leaving Callwood. Forty-three hundred of those trips are going to the core, and twenty-five hundred of them are going to the west shore, and then there's a small portion going to the peninsula. And then alternatively, you're getting about fifteen hundred trips coming in from the core and about twenty-five hundred in from the west shore, so the west shore trips seem to be pretty much evenly split, and then a few more going out to the peninsula that are coming in. And then trips within Callwood itself are about thirty-four hundred. And that concludes this portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Madam May. Question, and it actually goes back to that first map that you put up in this section, so the Regional Multimodal Network and Mobility Hubs. And this reflects a little bit the question that Councilor Day asked a minute ago, and that is that, you know, since the Regional Growth Strategy... And, and that is that, you know, since the regional growth strategy, we've redone our OCP, we've, we've done a fair amount of work around sort of identifying where we want our areas of density to be, where we want some of our kind of very transit friendly stuff to be. So, I can kind of see a number of pieces on the, the map that's here that, that seem to be missing. And, you know, Royal Bay, future of Royal Bay being an obvious one. My question is really sort of, how do we, how do we have that conversation? How do we get that onto the, the map?
This is one of the ways.
Okay.
So, this, one of the reasons why we are coming out is to make sure that we've got your more up-to-date information. The, your planner from Callwood is involved in the process. They sit on the development planning advisory committee, and are part of the IA meetings and so on. They've also been involved in the regional transportation plan stuff. So, that's another, like, ongoing working day kind of avenue to make sure that the Callwood information is, is up to date. And, you know, and this is a process. It's going to take some time to turn through all of the information and keep modifying things as we go along.
Okay. Then, can I provide you with sort of four quick suggestions? One is that I think there are two possible destinations that you would want to identify in terms of sort of pulling in a number of people. One is Royal Roads University, you know, significant piece in our community. The other is the, the Royal Bay School, which will be coming. It's a school that certainly serves well beyond Callwood's boundaries. So, depending on how you define it, I think that's one that, that might be considered. The other comments are, I think we need to be showing Royal Bay as a kind of a future density center. I think that's consistent with our official community plan, and I think it is a large enough area that it needs to be recognized on that regional scale, not least for its transportation implications. And I may have to show you on the specifics of the map, but you have sort of the extension of Veterans Memorial Parkway being shown as sort of a, a green route, whereas I think it really belongs in being the kind of, sort of the next level up in that.
Yeah. That's good. So, we're, Cory's getting the...
You got all of that right, Cory.
And we'll also be working with the planner as well, too, as, as we move on to the next stage. I'm kind of going the wrong direction in this presentation. I'm not sure how to get back to where I wanted to be.
Did you get that?
Okay, I guess I want to go this way.
Are you going back?
Yeah.
Okay.
There. That, that was where I want. Okay. That was it. Okay.
So, the next section deals with affordable housing. And the regional housing strategy, regional affordable housing strategy update has been considering the question of including a range of market rate housing in some of the things that it, it can deliver. And so, that's one of the questions that we are putting out there for consideration, and would appreciate some feedback on. The other thing is that they, there's a recommendation that the regional housing affordable... I think that's the wrong way around. The regional affordable housing strategy be updated on a regular basis, but there'd be a commitment to doing that. And part of that would be with a data book to, to help assess housing needs on an ongoing basis, and also to address needs and facilitate inclusive housing projects in communities. So, in Callwood, we would notice that secondary suites are permitted, accessory dwelling units are permitted, and you've also established an affordable housing reserve fund. And so, you're doing some interesting things there to support affordable housing within the community. And the next couple of slides are just going to provide an indicator of how Callwood is faring presently in terms of median incomes and housing costs. So, you can see actually that your median income is substantially higher than it is for the region as a whole, with almost $69,000 annual income, annual household income. This is 2006 data. We don't have access to the 2011 data yet. So, it is a bit dated, but all of the data is based on 2006. So, it is comparable. And for the CRD, it's, the annual median income is $53,000. So, here's just a, and a sort of quick analysis that has been provided by the CRD Housing Secretariat, based on median housing prices that come from the Victoria Real Estate Board Multiple Listing Service. And this is 2012 data. And so, it's just to kind of provide a bit of a, of a reference point. So, condominium units, the median housing price is 20, $224,000. And a single-family detached house is $460,000. So, the income required to qualify for a mortgage for the average or median condo unit is $50,434 a year. And to qualify to be able to purchase a single detached home, you would need an annual income of $94,124. So, you can see that generally, Callwood is actually doing fairly well on the, being able to afford housing, certainly from the condo unit side of things. And you're certainly faring much better than some of the other municipalities in that regard. And then this'll just give you an overview of, of some of your socioeconomic statistics. Your incidence of low income is low relative to the rest of the region, with 4.4% families compared to 8.2% in the region as a whole, and 24.2% unattached individuals compared to 32.2% in the region as a whole. And in this example, low income is defined as families or individuals spending 70% or more of their incomes on basic necessities such as food, shelter, and clothing. The average monthly gross rent in Callwood is actually a fair amount higher than it is in the CRD as a whole. So, that's $948 compared to $820. And the average monthly owners' major housing payments are $1153 compared to $1,063 for the region. You have fewer renter households, 24% compared to 35%, and more owner households at 76% compared to 65% for the region as a whole. And so, I'll just pause there. If there's any comments or questions on the affordable housing.
Thank you. Just, and I was working from your executive summary that was included with their agenda. And under the regional housing and affordability strategy, it included transitioning the regional housing trust fund to a regional housing levy. And I wasn't really sure what that meant. And also, it said that you wanted to set targets for the creation of new units of subsidized housing, market rental housing, affordable market housing, ownership, and supportive housing. And I just wondered if that was contemplated on a regional basis only, or if it would be contemplated on a, with regional input, but on, with each municipality providing some housing as well? Rather than, I'm basically looking for there to be some uptake from, from all regions towards affordable housing, rather than just in...
All the municipalities?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. At this stage, I'm not sure what the intention is with, with the latter one in terms of how that would be measured and, and accounted for. But generally, the way that data's collected and so on is, it would work, is collected by municipality. And so, there could be targets set. They may not be the same for all municipalities, though, because there's, they all have different contexts, especially the ones that, you know, an urban one versus one that's rural, or one that's urban and rural, things like that. There might be different targets. So, I think that'll be part of the exercise moving forward, is to figure out how you could develop something that would allow you to set the targets and to monitor it over time. And then in terms of the housing levy, I'm going to ask Henry Kampoff to, from the Housing Secretariat, to speak to that question.
Mayor, yes. Housing levy is, I don't think that has been subscribed to the American Housing Levy. The, our parking has sort of, one, uh, rule, is that we're just speaking. I was hearing, uh, that it should, it'll have a automatic levy, that's, uh, certain of, uh, certain of, uh, processes.
I guess I'd just leave my comment with you that I, I certainly would like to see affordable housing in Callwood for, for what, for the contributions that Callwood makes. I would like to see that go into, you know, a wider breadth of housing availability
Thank you, to the Chair. I just want to know if seniors' housing is being considered as part of the affordable housing strategy?
Yes, it is. And it would be on the continuum, the existing housing continuum, for generally low-income households. And a number of programs are targeted for seniors specifically.
Okay. Thank you. And just one other question on your, on your slide that talks about key considerations, median housing prices for 2012. Is it safe to assume that those are gross income numbers and not net?
So, the next section deals with community health and wellbeing, which is a new section. There, there isn't one in the RGS right now. So, this would be a new area, and it's going to draw heavily upon the community health and wellbeing research and policy project that's being undertaken as a parallel process to the RSS. And some of the things that are being looked, looked at there is to expand the concept of human health, to include physical, social, and mental health, to look at aging in place and family-friendly communities, and to consider also culture, poverty reduction, and equitable transportation investments. Your community plan actually recognizes community health and wellbeing in, in a number of different ways. And it does relate physical development to social wellbeing. And it also indicates that the growth, that the benefits of growth should be distributed equally throughout the community. And we can also see through your OCP that Callwood has made a commitment to influence social wellbeing through community health by developing or enhancing environments that enable healthy choices. Basic needs to ensure that there's healthy housing and food available for all. Personal health would be related to access to recreational, educational, emotional, spiritual, artistic, and cultural opportunities for everybody. And sense of place also is important in terms of ensuring community planning and design celebrate the community's unique history and natural setting and embrace, and that it embraces diversity. So, you're already doing it in a number of ways, and so it, it certainly is not a new thing for your community. Just having a quick look at the demographics of your community, that you're relatively young compared to some of the other municipalities, with a median age of just over 40 years, and just under 13% of your population over 65. And you can see through this graph that you've actually got lots of kids, and, and a good portion of your population within the wage-earning years, and, and not as many seniors. And so, that concludes that portion of the presentation.
On your, on your community health and wellbeing part of your executive summary, it mentioned considering policies on equitable transportation investment on a per capita basis? And I just wondered what that meant.
I'm just trying to think of a good way to explain that. I think it's referring to having accessible transportation options. So, handicapped accessible options would be one of them. And so, doing it on a per capita basis is one way of, is of ensuring that there's an equitable component to the investments. And, yeah, I think it would have a lot to do with universal access, but also active transportation options would be another one that would be important. And so, to bring those up and perhaps put more emphasis on investments in those areas.
So, I guess I, I just want to ensure that it doesn't mean that the areas with the highest density would have the greatest amenities, because it's important to have accessibility, for example, in all the areas. I mean, it's important to be able to access your bank and your grocery store, but it's also really important to be able to access the outdoors and, and get, get into the out-of-doors and get, get all those other healthy living benefits that we have in the community participate in sporting or creative endeavors.
I, I think the devil is in the details with, with some of these things, as, as you're pointing out some of these issues. And I think it's those kinds of discussions that will need to unfold as, as we go through the, the process. Right now, the recommendations are at a pretty high level, and are just sort of indicating a potential direction. So, those were good comments to be, to be bringing up about really drilling down on what is meant by equitable investments.
Yeah. I think I, I would, I could support equitable. I, I find per capita a little difficult to work with.
Okay. I, I see where you're going, because of the concentration that it may result in. And, okay, so, yes, thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Couple of quick comments. One is that I think it's important to make that link between community health and active transportation. I think there is a kind of a, you know, tons of research behind it, and I think it's important to, to bring out. The other one I just wanted to touch on very briefly is, there's this wonderful word happiness in there. And, and I just wanted to kind of emphasize that although it sometimes comes across as a slightly flaky concept, it's actually really important because it's about, you know, are we, are we living what's important to us? Are we, are we kind of, you know, enjoying all of the wonderful things that are, that are around us? And Callwood did actually go through a process of doing a happiness index a few years ago. And it's worth going back and, and I dig it out from somewhere. It's worth going back and, and looking at it and just getting a sense of just how happy we are in Callwood.
Yes. So, thank you for that comment. It isn't always perceived in that way. But it is an important concept, I think. Hey, are we ready to move on? Okay, environmental...
Okay, environmental health and resource management, uh, the, um, one of the, there's two key recommendations, one is to prepare a regional ecosystem network plan, which, uh, would incorporate the nature needs half concept, and don't worry, there's a couple of slides coming up on what nature needs half, um, means, and secondly, to address the removal of private forest land from provincial legislation under, uh, the forestry tenures, um, because that happened since the last, um, RGS was, uh, prepared. So, in, um, Callwood, you've got forty-eight hectares of, um, of green space, and that includes the Esquimalt Lagoon, and, uh, there's a large park there, and Callwood Creek Park are two of the main ones, and then there's Lookout Lake Park. So, nature needs half concept originated during the development of the CRD Park's Strategic Plan of 2012, the movement is based on scientific evidence of what is necessary to protect biodiversity, the concept has been applied, um, in almost every continent at every geographic scale, from the national to, uh, city level, and within the CRD, nature includes parks and protected areas, um, it could also include working landscapes such as forestry and agriculture, open spaces, greenways, urban forests, and green building features. The nature needs half concept supports regional environmental sustainability by protecting the full range of nature's services, which, um, include climate regulation, pollination, groundwater protection, food provision, air and water purification, and species migration. It's also noted that daily contact with nature is important for maintaining overall health and wellbeing, and it is a key quality of life indicator. Nature needs half supports economic sustainability through positive impacts on property values, and, um, can be an encouragement, um, to invest, uh, from a business point of view, it's related to smart growth, it, um, helps with tourism and natural resource sec, sectors, and it's also can help mitigate natural disasters. And through the RSS, we, uh, will explore options for a made-in-CRD interpretation of nature needs half, and I'll, I'll pause here for questions, comments.
Thank you, I, I think there, um, has been just, um, well, it's one small area, but it's a big area, that's been left out of the plan, and that's the shoreline planning. Um, at AVICC, we had an excellent talk, uh, by Ramona DeGraff, who has been working with a number of, um, communities around, um, official community plans, shoreline planning, and specifically, um, eelgrass beds, spawning, um, feeder fish, uh, inventories, and, uh, really, um, it is, um, a huge part of our ecosystem, everywhere within the Capital Regional District, and on your map, you did include the shoreline, um, around, uh, Esquimalt Lagoon, uh, leading over to Albert Head Lagoon, which both are, um, incredibly rich, uh, forage fish, um, breeding grounds, and it's just a, it's a very difficult thing to do, sa- same is, uh, sea level rise, it's also very difficult to plan for, um, but there are, uh, planning initiatives that have been undertaken, um, as locally as, um, the Cowichan, uh, lake area, and, uh, dealing with some of the pressures of development on shorelines. Um, so, I think it's, um, critical, if we're going to protect our ecosystem, that we have a little bit of all of it.
Yes, and, and thank you for those comments, um, we are somewhat limited, um, in terms of our mandate within, uh, the oceans, um, and, and even with freshwater areas, but, um, your, your point is, is well-taken, and, um, it is an important part of, of the ecosystems here, and so, to, you know, to the degree that I think is, is possible, I'm sure that that'll be delved into as well.
Thank you, Your Worship, just wondering, um, if I'm not seeing Royal Roads University, the park and stuff on there, I don't see it anywhere, you identified a couple others, but that's a pretty big one in the center of Callwood.
Um, yes, we're, we're not identifying all of the parks on that map, it's, um, lands that are in the Capital Green space inventory, yeah.
Is it anticipated it'll be in the revised version, or the updated version? Because I would think it's considered green space, it's got trails, and...
Yeah, and again, that's, as, as we get into the, we're, we're just launching into that stage of it, so, this is, um, a good time to be documenting that that's something that should be looked into, and, um, considered as, as the new maps get drawn up.
Thank you, I'd just like to recommend that, um, there's several parks that should be included, um, and probably could obtain through, through planning a map of all the city parks, where we certainly have control, um, over the ecosystems, um, that are, are being maintained through those city parks, we have a number of natural parks, including the Forty-Acre, um, Natural Havenwood Park, uh, but also Esquimalt Lagoon, which we have requested previously, that the CRD consider, um, possibly, uh, putting on their list for acquisition, um, and, uh, so I, I would, it, it's a very important area, that's regionally significant.
Yes, thank, thank you for those comments, and I believe the, the recommendation to look at a regional ecosystem network will, um, part of the notion with that is to provide better, better connectivity, and see it as an entire network, not just, um, isolated parcels of land, that may be serving, uh, um, some limited ecosystem, uh, functions, but when they're connected, of course, they, um, become much more viable. So, our, the next section is dealing with the economic development, and, um, we would just note that, uh, this portion of the consultant's report was, it was a little thin, and so we've supplemented, uh, some of that information with, uh, some additional information here, and, um, one of the things we are looking at is increasing, uh, the economic resilience of the region, and playing to our strengths, so, right now, the, the, some of the stronger areas of the economy include tourism, uh, the military, shipbuilding, post-secondary education, uh, provincial, regional, local government, and health and wellness, uh, there, we'd also like to be looking at fostering low-carbon green industries, and social innovation, and recognizing and protecting employment lands. So, an in- inventory of industrial lands was done, uh, several years ago by the CRD, and, um, there are eleven hectares in Callwood that, um, are zoned for industrial, uh, use, and I understand that currently those lands are vacant, um, one of the questions that we're posing is, should other kinds of employment lands also be recognized in the regional sustainability strategy, um, because it's an, also important to protect land for employment purposes, uh, so often, it, once it's gone, you can't get it back, and it, there's a need to make sure there's a good land base for, um, the kinds of jobs that you're seeking to attract, uh, into your community, so, um, that, again, is just, uh, one of the questions that, that we are putting out there. And, you'll see, actually, now, from this map, it might give you, uh, it's not the measles, um, really bad case of acne or something, um, but this is showing, um, where employment is located in the region, and it's based on, um, a survey that the CRD does every five years, um, and this one is done in two thousand and eleven, a survey of employers, um, and one of the questions that is asked of them is how many employees they have, so, the size of the dot indicates, um, the number of employees that are found in the, in the general vicinity, it's not like that exact spot on the map necessarily, but it, it gives you an idea of the distribution overall, so you can see, the largest dot, or one of the largest red dots in Callwood is Royal Roads, and, um, and another one is the Wanda Fuka Rec Center, uh, which employs about, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty people, Royal Roads employs about three-hundred-and-fifty, so, according to this data, it's, uh, the largest employer in the community, and then Scansa Construction is also, uh, a significant employer with about two-hundred-and-forty employees.
Where does Transit's dot go? Transit, where does their dot go, because they're, you know, uh, we have people driving down our roads all the time, every day.
Okay, well, the, the dot would go in the headquarters, not the, the bus traveling, yeah, we're not tracking individual, um, bus drivers on, on this map. Is, is, is that answering your question? Yeah. It is likely showing up in one of those smaller dots, and, as I mentioned before, this isn't, um, just, exa, you know, precisely based on the geography, um, but it's to give the general distribution of, of the jobs, and where there's concentrations of jobs compared to a dispersal of jobs, so you can see, um, just going back to there, that, uh, there is a concentration along, um, the Island Highway, you know, there's a, there's a series of dots along there, they're all smaller, and then there's, um, concentration in Langford, a grouping clustering of, of smaller dots, and then, uh, there's the biggest one on this particular map would be, um, CFB Esquimalt. So, that, you know, that's sort of the way to read the map, um, it's, it's a little bit harder to look at when you, um, are trying to seek, uh, a very specific, um, industry or business. And, from the, uh, two thousand and eleven Origin Destination Survey, we've pulled out a few indicators, which also will give you, um, a little more information about the community, so, Callwood has, um, more workers per household at one-point-four-three than, well, it's pretty much on par with the West Shore communities, and, um, and it's more than the region as a whole, and, uh, in terms of employment density, there's, the employment density is relatively high, at two-point-three jobs per hectare, and, uh, the West Shore as a whole is zero-point-one-two, and that is because it includes the Wanda Fuka land base, so, some of these statistics can maybe be tuned up a little bit, so they're, they're a little more reflective, what we're actually trying to, um, understand, but at this point, it's just kind of the gross number, and then the regional planning area as a whole is zero-point-eight-eight, so you can see you actually have quite a high employment density here, and, um, but then the jobs per person are lower, and, um, so you've got, uh, zero-point-two-five jobs per person in the, uh, community compared to zero-point-five-one for the region as a whole, and zero-point-three-one for, so you're pretty close to the West Shore, um, number, but, uh, about half of, of the region as a whole. So, that's the, uh, the section on the economic development.
Thank you, um, you asked a question, should other employment lands be recognized, and I think the answer is yes, and I would encourage you to work with our Director of Planning, because he's got a good handle on, on where those should go, um, the other comment I wanted to make, um, in terms of the, the employment density, it's, it's quite interesting to, to see, but I think, um, because the RSS is a very kind of future-looking document, I think it's important, particularly with a place like Callwood, to not only look at where we are right now, but to look at where we're, we're trying to, to be, um, and Capital City Center, Callwood Corners is a kind of really good example of that, it's not showing up as a particularly large dot on the map right now, but, you know, if all of our dreams come true in kind of ten, twenty years, it will be a very significant dot on the map, so I think in, in terms of kind of using it as kind of planning information, it's also important to look at the, the future as well as just, you know, where we've been.
Yes, and thank you for that comment, and I think, um, and it's, it's well-taken, the, um, identification of Callwood Corners as a mobility hub is that recognition of, of what you're looking for, and in future, one would expect then there will be a different distribution of the jobs. Food Systems is another one of the, uh, sub-strategies that's being undertaken, and it's also going to be a new, um, topic area within the regional sustainability strategy, and the recommendations are that we look at providing more robust support for the agricultural industry and farmers, and that would include things like incorporating, um, edge planning, uh, working landscape protection, so that fits in with the nature needs half kind of concept, and, um, looking at the possibility of swapping lands, uh, swapping ALR lands out and bringing new ones in, and ecolo, looking at the ecological services that are provided by farms and, and Within Callwood, you've got seventy-seven-point-three hectares of agricultural land reserve, and guess where they are? That is the, um, just want to get the name right here, it is the golf course, it's the Royal, yeah, Royal Callwood Golf Course, that, that is your agricultural land, and there is also a, a small parcel of land on the waterfront, uh, that looks like it probably is an active farm. And then, um, this map is intended to be showing the, um, in the existing regional growth strategy, what the, the policy areas are, and, and then just to put it into a bit of a broader context, yeah, uh, with the immediate, um, surrounding municipalities. The next section is dealing with regional resiliency, so if we, if there's any questions on food systems, I'd be happy to hear them or comment.
Thank you, two quick ones, one is, um, I think when we're looking at this, we also need to be looking at backyard agriculture, which I think is an increasingly important piece, um, and the other comment I wanted to make, and it slightly goes sort of right throughout the, the Golden Document, is, you, you talked at the beginning about the importance of this being a kind of a collaborative document, um, and there are sort of, when we talk about the delivery, it kind of feels like, you know, here's the CRD and the other pieces don't, so I'm, I'm kind of looking at groups like CR Fair, who, you know, have the potential to play an important role, and, and how are we kind of engaging them and kind of helping to deliver that kind of, um, urban agriculture, agricultural and food policy that, that we're looking for, so I think some of that kind of more inclusive language going forward would be great to see.
Thank, thank you for that comment, and, um, I would anticipate that that's exactly what will happen, the RGS review report is a backwards-looking one, because it's an assessment of the existing document, and then, sort of, how well, um, has the region done in terms of living up to what, what those policies say, but moving forward, you're quite right, it's important to, um, the press have a little different tone in, in the language. So, the, um, next-to-last section is dealing with regional resiliency, and it's important to note that, um, climate action has been chosen as the lens through which the RSS will be developed, and climate action will be integrated across all of the policy topics, and, uh, so there may well not be actually a separate section on climate action, it's going to be just incorporated into, um, each of the policy areas, and, uh, another important aspect of regional resiliency is, uh, to enhance disaster preparedness and address sea level rise. and address sea level rise. And again, those are new areas. They're not covered in the existing document and important areas to begin addressing. We just note that your own official community plan reflects a strong commitment to addressing climate change. And I won't read the quote to you, but just wanted to, you know, give a tip of the hat to you there. And that some of the specific policies that may be included in the RSS would look at land use that focuses growth and redevelopment inside the Ruxpa and within urban centers and mobility hubs. So, even tightening things up even within the Ruxpa areas. Support of transportation policies, seeking a greater mode of split in dense centers, making some key decisions on transit with respect to rapid and frequent transportation, transit services and networks, and the ENN Rail. Also looking at green space for ecosystem functionality, forest carbon storage and climate adaptation. So, that's really taking it to another level in terms of the way we view green space. And the integration of climate change criteria into budgeting and decision-making processes. So, if there are any comments or questions?
Thank you. Just wanted to kind of emphasize the importance, like I love the way climate action is sort of threaded right throughout this document as a kind of guiding theme, if you want, because I think that's very much, you know, if we don't pay attention to it, we may as well not pay attention to all of the others. But in that, you know, you, there's a lot of sort of talk about the kind of the adaptation side of it. But I was listening to a presentation the other day, and it was made very clear in no uncertain terms, that if we don't also pay attention to the mitigation, we may as well not bother with the adaptation because we're hooped. So, it does need to be that kind of, they are both important piece, needs to kind of thread through it.
Yes, and once again, thank you for your comment. The Climate Action Sub-Strategy is now up and running. It hadn't been started when this was completed. And adaptation and mitigation are both going to be considered. And the policies, as they go through the, as they become developed for the RSS, will cover both mitigation and adaptation.
Thank you very much, Susan, for your presentation in here. And I'm sure that you have more to go there?
One last bit.
Alrighty.
So, this is quick, and this is just related to the implementation section. And one of the options now, under the Local Government Act, is to develop a sliding-scale amendment process. And there's the opportunity to consider including minor amendments to deal with housekeeping matters such as minor changes to the Ruxpa boundaries. So, the kinds of issues that would be consistent with the overall direction of the RSS and wouldn't undermine it and so on. And it allows those changes, those housekeeping-type changes, to occur without having to go through the whole big referral process to all 13 municipalities. It can be a decision of the majority of the board or whatever the, it would have to be at least the majority of the board. But the, there is the option of actually developing what the process itself is through this. So, this is one of the ideas that is going to be considered as we move ahead. And also committing to a comprehensive implementation process, of which the regional contact statements in the OCPs is an important component. But also looking at providing some guidance for determining the consistency of the regional contact statements so that there's some consistency among the statements with respect to how they relate to the RSS. The sub-strategies for food systems and climate action will themselves actually have implementation actions built into them that will be in addition to the RSS. They will actually be an implementation action of the plan. And the same with the parallel plans. They'll all have Transportation, Community Health and Well-Being, and the Park Strategic Plan and so on, will all have their own implementation streams. And then finally, there's the monitoring. And then, now, I have concluded the presentation.
I was just jumping ahead there because I think that what you've presented with us is a lot of information, and I'm sure that council will have some upcoming discussions on these various aspects. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Counselor Day.
Thank you. I just had one comment for you, and it was from the summary, looking at what your options were for the amendment process. And the options included, I think, four options. But I would highly recommend that regional and municipal staff should meet and work together on any of those initiatives because it's certainly important to me in my community that our staff have an opportunity to describe the issues intimately that they're dealing with.
Yes, thank you for that comment through the mayor. That is the process that we are undergoing, and your staff is actively involved in the process and will continue to have opportunities. This is a co-creation process. And so, as we carry on, we're counting on the local folks to make sure that this gets tuned up the right way. Thank you.
Moving forward, counsel, to item 6.1, Finance and Admin. And he just left. Maybe we'll do that. Counselor Lukens will have a short, brief break while these folks are disengaging from the visuals. And to allow Counselor Martin to return.
Thanks to the CRD folks for coming.
Absolutely. Anyways, we'll move into 6.1.1, Section 226, Community Charter Revitalization Tax Exemption. And this is the one where we had the additional draft policy paperwork on your desk, folks. Director Holdenby, when this was last before us, there were some changes that required being done in there. Do you have information in regards to those changes?
If no objections, I can run through each of those changes that were made from the original bylaw to the one that's presently in front of you.
Okay.
So, I'm referring to the first page of the bylaw, which is 139 of 156. And you'll recall that there was some discussion about if we have cause in the future to look at other land uses as being justifiable for tax.
Yeah, so you have, you're going to have to jump because we have, yeah, well, we're at 6.1, and the recommendation was to bring it back, but the actual bylaw is down in 7.1.
You've completely thrown me off now.
We were just trying to keep you on your toes.
And insofar as the policy goes, apologies for not including the policy initially, but there are no changes to the policy. And indeed, the changes are solely in the bylaw to reflect the policy. Back to page 139 of 156. The discussion led us towards thinking that it would be a good idea to identify this bylaw or establish an identifier, and that's been done in two places. In the title at the top, you'll see reference to for hotel development. And then in the bylaw citation, in Part 1, the bracketed term hotels has been included there. So, this particular tax, excuse me, tax exemption bylaw is now identified solely for hotels and the associated uses with that, and would not include rental housing or other possible items that will be considered in the future. We would set up separate bylaws for those. There was discussion about making sure that bed and breakfast establishments were excluded. And you'll now find at the bottom of that particular page, a definition of bed and breakfast for the purpose of, on the next page, in the definition of hotel, including the phrase specifically excluding bed and breakfast accommodations. Moving then to page 142 of 156, under the heading Term of Tax Exemption.
Our electronic pages are not the same as your print pages. So, simply just the report page or the bylaw page 4 of 18?
Sorry about that. I am now on page 4 of 18 then. And there was discussion at the Committee of the Whole Meeting that relative to the term of tax exemption, there was a reference to an annual review in the policy that was not necessarily reflected in the bylaw. So, Section 6.2 has been added under Term of Tax Exemption, which addresses that and brings consistency with the policy now. Moving to page 10 of 18, we're into the Schedule now, Schedule A. And number 8, the third item down on the page, No Change in Zoning. We've added the phrase unless otherwise agreed to by the city in writing at the bottom of, or at the end of that clause, just to provide some flexibility if the city saw a good reason to entertain an amendment to zoning, be it text or otherwise. So, still under the city's control. And in Schedule B, page 16 of 18, that same phrase has been placed in the same clause under conditions of tax exemption, number 1.2, 1 bracket 2, no change in zoning unless otherwise agreed to by the city in writing. And that concludes the changes.
Counsel, Counselor Day.
Thank you. Just going back to the term and the review, I think it was on page 4, and I'm still trying to get there. Under Section 6, 6.1 and 6.2, 6.1 says that the term of the tax exemption under this bylaw is 10 years. And Section 6.2 says renewed annually up to a maximum of 10 years. So, as I read them, they sound like they're saying different things.
Through the chair, that certainly is not the intent. When drafting this new clause, I initially had it as a notwithstanding statement, notwithstanding Section 6.1, but changed it to further to simply because it's an explanation or a clarification of 6.1. So, by saying further to Section 6.1, the intent is to clarify that, yes, the term basically is 10 years, but there's an annual review up to and continual renewal up to that 10 years.
And I'm just wondering, where is it spelled out? What criteria needs to be met in order for that tax exemption to continue?
It will be spelled out in the certificate. And I think, even below that, Part 7 addresses each of the criteria.
So, now this is where I need, do we need another recommendation or something on this? Because it's here saying it recommended to council that the policy and bylaw be forwarded to the regular meeting of council, including the proposed changes. So, are we looking for a resolution here that we accept those changes? So, if there's no further comments or questions from council, can I have that, please?
Second.
Question or?
Yeah, just a quick question. Just curious if this bylaw, because I won't be able to speak to it later, has been to the solicitors or?
Through the chair, yes.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Moving then into 6.2.1, Parks, Rec and Culture. Counselor Day.
Thank you. I'm just still getting there. So, at the Parks and Recreation Committee, we had a presentation of a report from Helen Lockhart, engineer, who explained back in April of 2012, council approved funding for a picnic table, a garbage can, and a portable washroom for Lookout Lake. And the work began in August of 2012. And as a result of the work beginning, adjacent property owners questioned why the city had proceeded with the improvements without public consultation being held. And committee members, staff, as well as yourself, the mayor, met with the residents to discuss the new amenities and heard a number of concerns raised by them. And at the next regular meeting of council, council had resolved that the adjacent property owners should be invited to a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting to formally discuss the new amenities and address their concerns. Helen provided a PowerPoint presentation which listed the concerns expressed by the nearby property owners, as they expect the area will have more visitors who will stay longer because of the improvements. Their concerns include, but weren't limited to worrying about odors from the washroom, noise, street parking, fire hazards, trespassing on private property. They also included in the presentation a list of options the city could undertake to address those concerns. And they were included, but not limited to creating bylaws that limit the hours of closure, putting dogs-on-leash regulations into effect, posting signage with respect to possession and consumption of liquor, and increasing police and bylaw enforcement for a couple of weeks in early summer to enforce infractions concerning liquor and noisy party activities. The meeting was well-attended by local The meeting was well attended by local residents. There was information sent out to the surrounding area. And the recommendation was, and I would move, that the city undertake the following measures in Lookout Lake Park for the summer of 2013, that we install the portable washroom, that we require that dogs be on leash, that we sign the park as dust-to-dawn use only, or dawn-to-dusk use, sorry. That'd be bad. With no alcohol permitted at any time, and that visitors please respect the neighbors. And that the public be notified through onsite signage and the public notification process that there will be a public meeting in the fall to review the effectiveness and appropriateness of these measures.
Discussion, counsel? Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. More of a, of a comment. I was sad to hear one of the residents say that, that they didn't feel listened to because I think sort of through the, the process, through the onsite meeting, and through having a, a very extensive discussion at, at Parks and Rec, I think we were very much trying to, to hear from, from residents. I think we also recognized that we had lots of folks in the audience, it was great attendance. We recognized that we also were not hearing from the people who, it sounds obvious to say, the people who weren't there, but there were a lot of people who used the park throughout the summer, who weren't necessarily notified because they don't happen to live immediately around the area. So we, we felt it was important to get that balance of input. And so what the recommendation is, is trying to do is to put into place some of the things that, that start to address the residents' concerns. I absolutely recognize that installing the washroom is, is something that has met a lot of resistance from the neighborhood, but we felt that having it in place for the summer gives us an opportunity to kind of assess from both sides, from the resident's point of view and also from the user public point of view, whether it was a benefit or, or maybe nobody uses it and, and it's a waste of our money and, and we shouldn't be going there anyway. So let's give that opportunity to kind of test it out. It is a, a unit that you bring on and off-site, so that's relatively easy to, to do. And I think it's important to point out, there were a couple of other issues that were raised this evening, that evening, that aren't in the recommendation but actually kind of went as a, you know, staff recognized this is something that, that they could handle. One of them related to, there are issues around parking in the area. Some of the parking areas were apparently not being used appropriately and end up sort of blocking people's driveways and things like that. So we felt that that's something that bylaw could keep their eyes on. And another issue that came up is, is that apparently some people are choosing to kind of drop off their garbage in the area and, and it ends up on, on somebody's front lawn. And again, that's not something, we need a resolution for council. We just need to kind of ask our public work staff to, to get on with it, and, and they were there. And so those pieces are not part of the recommendation, but they were part of that discussion coming out of, of that meeting.
Counselor Harvey?
Thank you, through the chair. I noticed that part of the recommendation is to install the washroom, but we haven't addressed the issue of the smell that could emanate from the washroom. Was there any discussion around that and what we're gonna do to try to mitigate that?
Counselor Day.
Thank you. There is, there is provision in the funding that we set aside for this year to have it cleaned as often as possibly three times per week, so there should be no odor issues associated with the, with, with the washroom. And certainly if there was, we, staff anticipate that it can be dealt with through regular servicing, and we would certainly hear if it was not.
Thank you, through the chair. I just think it's really important for us to be clear in, in what we're asking staff to do, so I would recommend if I can, a friendly amendment to say that they will be cleaned three times a week.
Just, if I may, I, I think we're, the recommendation included that they're being done twice a week and that we would bump it up to three times a week. They're going to be monitoring for any issues with the washrooms. So if, if they're finding that they're needing to be done more often because of smell issues, they will bump it up.
One question, Counselor Day. We have here dogs on leash. Is there a timeline on this? Is this 24/7 or while park hours are open?
It's for the summer, so the, the dogs on a leash would be also a trial for that park, and it would be a big change because dogs have been able to be free there before. Just through the chair, the question was whether or not that would be 24/7, and because the park is closed from dusk to dawn, it would be during the operating hours of the park, dogs would be required to be on a leash this summer at Lookout Lake.
So same as park operational hours. Counselor Lukens, you had your hand in the air, and then Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, I don't see in the recommendation that it says that the washrooms will be cleaned twice a week and bumped up, so I'm not sure where you're referring to. I just want to make sure, as Counselor Harvey has stated, that we're very clear on what we would like to have happen. So I know it may be in the report, but it's not in the recommendation that I see.
Thank you. It is in the report that went to Parks and Recreation, and it was written clearly in black and white in, in that report. So that was the understanding portrayed by staff, that that was their anticipation for how they would handle it.
But it's not in the motion, and just for clarity, we want to be very clear on what message we're sending to staff and to council, so if we ever had to come back to this, it's in the recommendation, so I would also ask that it be added. The other question I have is with respect to, a resident spoke of the gravel that's been put on the beach, and obviously it will, with wear and tear and walking on it, will move into the water. How are we going to manage that? Because, I mean, it could regress.
Counselor Day?
Thank you. Unfortunately, the sand and the gravel issue is something that we have very little choice over. It is a dam, and it's, it is required to meet the dam safety regulations that any materials that we're adding to it are of the appropriate type. It was, of course, not built necessarily way long time ago with the appropriate materials, which is why we're having to add materials, I guess, now, because some of that is sinking and changing. But it's my understanding that as a dam, we have to maintain it as a dam.
Counselor Martin?
Through, through the mayor to maybe our CAO. Just to clarify, so with, with this, it says for the summer of 2013, so does that suggest that as of September 21st, this expires?
Through the chair, that's my assumption, yes, and you would be revisiting this issue in the fall?
Okay.
Or when brought forward through the Parks Committee?
And the second question I have regarding that is if we're requiring the dogs to be on leash just for the summer, could I just get an explanation of that for me? And why, I mean, we do not have a leash law in Callwood, so I'm wondering why we want to take them or put them on leash just for the summer?
So dogs on a, on a leash is also being put forward on a, on a trial basis, because all the changes at Lookout Lake are being put forward on a trial basis to see if that works or not. The issues around dogs in the park, I mean, dogs have been going to that park for a very long time, and they've been enjoying a great deal of freedom. There is, I guess, a number of options for dogs on a leash. Callwood's default is that dogs have to be under effective control, which is defined, at least in this Capital Regional District on their website, as the dog responding to the owner's call within three seconds. And I think in other parks, the summer months, dogs are prohibited from being at the beach. That's true at Matheson Lake, it's true at a number of other, I can't think of another one off the top of my head, but a number of local parks that have beaches, the dogs are prohibited from the beaches in, in the summer months. So we're not asking to go that far, we're saying the dogs can be permitted, but they need to be on a leash.